Welcome to the March 13, 2023 Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the pleasure leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, vote to approve the minutes from February 27.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, February 27, 2023.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hagerty, I forgot public.
No, it's all right, it's all right. Yeah, so I just have one public announcement for this meeting today. It's actually one I'm very, very excited about. We're moving in the right direction on this. The Southfield Redevelopment Authority, Union Point, is holding public hearings on March 15, this Wednesday, and March 29 at 7:00 PM with Union Point developers, Brookfield Properties, regarding final redevelopment plans for Abington, Rockland, and Waymouth. The public hearings will take place at Farring Way, 25 Stonehaven Drive in Waymouth. The public hearings will include the master development plan, redevelopment financial analyses, 2023 land use plan, utilities report proposed mitigation, and preliminary transportation impact assessments. Out of Abington's property of Union Point, 75 acres are deemed developable. Seventy-five acres are deemed developable land with the remainder designated for open space. Brookfield Properties is presenting three scenarios for Abington's development of our town's property of the former naval airbase. And the three scenarios, I just, for people watching at home and for the audience, this is what Brookfield is going to be presenting to Union Point, to the Southfield Redevelopment Authority. So here we go, bear with me. The first one is heavy non-residential scenario, which is 75% of the net developable acres will be built as retail, commercial, and industrial, with the remaining 25% of the acreage as residential. This could generate $4.2 million in net revenues after expenses. The second plan is the balanced scenario. 50% of the net developable acres will be built as retail, commercial, and industrial. And industrial, and the remaining 50% of the acreage as residential, generating approximately $4.7 million in net revenues after expenses. And the last scenario that they are laying out for us, heavy residential scenario. 25% of the net developable acres will be built as retail, commercial, and industrial, and 75% of the acreage as residential, generating approximately $5.4 million in revenues after expenses. Those numbers were achieved through what Waymouth has generated with their property right now, and they compared it to what our acreage is, and, you know, make a accommodating the size. There will be more informative public sessions conducted in Abington with the developer in Union Point. Those dates are in the works. If residents are interested and want to know more about these final drafts for the redevelopment master plan documents, please go to www.southfieldra.com. I know this has been a decades-long project, but I have to really give a huge shout-out to our liaison to the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, Roger Woods, he is being, he's very persistent on this and making sure that we're moving this project forward. And also to the previous liaison, Kevin Donovan. Him and Roger have worked very hard together to move this project forward. There was a lot of moving parts to this. There was the property management, there was also cleanup that has been going on on the property. And I want to give a huge shout-out also to the U.S. Navy, who has been very receptive in participating in the cleanup of the naval base. So, thank you, thank you. This is a long time coming, and obviously this isn't going to be finished overnight. We're decades into this project, but there seems to be light at the end of the tunnel. So if you have any questions, please go to this public hearing on the 15th and the 29th. And there will also be more in the future in Abington. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for announcements.
Thank you. Kevin?
I just have one, I just, I was listening to the comments that, or the response at the MBTA in Keolos. Were those the two that responded to us? Well, from Fox 25 or the other day? Yeah, I just want to say if you're listening, that's, you guys can do better. That's embarrassing. That's not a response, you guys can do better. I hope you're listening, and please get in contact, because that's not an acceptable response.
Mike?
Nothing.
As far as the MBTA goes, we are, and I wasn't planning on discussing it, but since you brought it up, I'll talk about it on the public comments. As most of you know, Fox News was here, and NBC 10 was here to talk to Scott and I about the issues at the train. And for those of you that don't know, the Kingston Line has had 30 incidents since 1996, '97 when it was built. Eighteen of those have been in Abington. And the majority of them have been North Av and Birch Street. So 60% of the incidents on the Kingston Line are right here in Abington. We have a serious issue here, and the reporter actually asked me, do you expect another incident? Do you think there'd be another incident? And yes, there will be another incident, unfortunately. So we have to continue. We did hire a consultant. The board urged Scott to do this about a year ago. And they are coming back with their recommendations, hopefully next week. And once we get those recommendations, we'll discuss it. And then we will decide how we're going to proceed with the MBTA. In 2017, they were before this board, and they said they were going to do certain things, and none of those things have been done. So we're not going to give up, we're going to keep fighting them, and there's going to be some changes, one way or another. So, anything to add?
Nope.
Thanks, Kevin, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
So we did the minutes. Let's go to the 6:35 request for an all-alcohol common vic license at the Terranova Center Market, 1501 Bedford Street. Please introduce yourselves.
Sure, Attorney Scott Rubin, from Brockton, Mass, here with Yanni Jadim and Marcos Jadim. Yes. They are the co-owners of Terranova Center Market. I'm sure the board is aware, this Brazilian market at 1501 Bedford Street in Abington has been there for almost 20 years now, serving the Brazilian community and those that enjoy Brazilian food.
Not just the Brazilian community.
That's what I mean, that's what I said, people that enjoy. Of course. They've had both the market and the restaurant there for an extended period of time, as I mentioned. They came to me and requested that I seek out a full liquor license for the restaurant portion of the business. It takes up about 30% of the space. If you're familiar with the space, the left-hand side of the market, as you enter, is just the market itself. The right side is essentially a buffet with a sit-down restaurant. They're proposing basically to have, as far as the hours are concerned, Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Sunday, 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So really, just serving the lunch and dinner crowd during the week and on the weekends as well. Their customer base has been asking for this. They actually have, you may know, a convenience market in Brockton. They actually acquired a beer and wine license for that location, that happens to be a package store. But Yanni's the manager of that location. That's been a very successful pairing for that particular market. And they are confident that they can run this restaurant with this added piece of liquor. They're very responsible neighbors. Obviously, they've been here for 20 years, so they're serving the community capably. I passed the background check for the beer and wine in Brockton. Don't expect any issues with that as far as Abington is concerned. It would only be for the sit-down service, there's not going to be a bar. There would only be a bar, service bar, as they say. So the waiters and waitresses would go back to the service bar, and all service would be at tables, there's no room for bar seating. And again, they're going to end at nine o'clock, so they really shouldn't. Everything that happens in liquor is always well after nine o'clock, so, all the bad stuff, anyway. So with that, certainly answer any questions that the board have, but I recommend that you award this license to this applicant.
So we have liquor licenses available?
We do have one available, we do have a couple available, yes.
Can I make a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'll second that motion. Can I reiterate those remarks to make it part of the public hearing, please?
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Sorry, so I don't have to repeat?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll continue.
All right, so just keeping with the discussion. With everything that we were sent from Nancy, it looks like there's no issues with, from the police, fire, health, building department, and treasure collector. I like hearing that.
Wonderful. I do have the returns for Nancy, I didn't know if she was in the office.
Yeah, leave them with me.
Oh, great, thank you.
I'll make sure she gets them.
These hours are going to be consistent with the current open hours?
No, I think the market's actually open more hours.
Longer, okay.
Yes, so.
The market actually opened seven to eight. We actually put it nine, because before we used to open until nine.
Yep.
But now it's been eight, so we're just being safe here.
Okay.
In case we get more crowd at night, we just extend one hour like we was years before pandemic, yeah.
Okay.
And then we decided to keep the market until 8:00 PM, but we're just being safe. So for now, it's going to be 8:00 PM, but we don't want to have a problem later that it's eight, and then, you know.
Everyone's properly trained, is it TIPS certified?
Yanni's the manager, so the manager is required.
I am, and we probably have two other employees trained, yes.
We'll have all servers. Again, waitress service is really going to be bar, you know, it'd be a service bar. But waitresses will be properly trained not to over-serve or serve those that don't, shouldn't be served.
So you're not changing the seating or parking, anything?
Nothing, nope.
Shall we open up to the audience?
I'm good.
Anyone from the audience have anything to say on this hearing? Seeing none. They have been a good neighbor for 20 years, and they sell terrific meats still, if anyone's out there listening.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the all-alcohol common vic to your license, restaurant license at Terranova Center Market, Inc., 1501 Bedford Street. I am Jarden Manager.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Number two, vote to allow the town manager to enter into a contract with Mass Historical Commission. Scott, can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, this is in relation to work, funds that we're seeking to repair the Memorial Bridge. And one of the things that you'll see, and it's in the town meeting warrant when we get to that, is to put a preservation restriction on it. But a lot of these things and these steps are just to help us get some grant funding.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, so as a liaison to the Abington Historical Commission, they had a meeting two weeks ago in discussion with the Island Grove Bridge, and they're moving good things on their end as well.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to vote to allow the town manager to enter into a contract with Mass Historical Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Number three, vote to allow Abington Celebrates to use the North School parking lot for yard sale fundraiser on April 15 with the rain date of April 16. Kenny?
Thank you very much. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I'm going to get right to the point. The fireworks are planned for June 10. Abington celebrates Friday Founder's Weekend is June 9, 10, 11, the fireworks on the 11. Fundraising is tough nowadays. We sent out a letter requesting businesses, they've been very good, so we're getting there. We did try to come up with some new ideas this year. Some of the new ideas, St. Patrick's Day Parade, this Sunday, we're going to be doing some bucket collections. So if you have some spare change around town, we would appreciate it. Taste of Abington, one of the members, who happens not to be here, one of the members of the Board of Selectmen, is working with us to come up with a Taste of Abington Restaurant Week during the school vacation week. Because with a house full of kids, the last thing you want to do is be cooking. So what we're trying to do is get six, seven restaurants, and of course, a couple ice cream places, to donate a portion of their profits for a certain day of the week. And we'll print it all out, calendar, so busy moms and dads can just go, oh, this is who I'm calling tonight. So there'll be more about that when your absent member returns. Fireworks Paint Night in 518, we're going to do a meat raffle as a new addition, hopefully, to the weekend. But what I'm here for tonight is a town-wide yard sale. What we would like to do is something not new to towns, but new to us. And we would encourage residents to have a yard sale on the same day. And what we would do is we would charge these people $20, and we would provide them with a nice sign that would be delivered the day of the yard sale. We would produce a digital map, and we would also hand out maps. We would like to use the North School as kind of a base of operations. People can bring stuff that they want to get rid of, and Abington Celebrates would sell that and raise money for Abington Celebrates, along with, so it would be the start of the route. You know, hopefully, we can get 20, 30 homes. Carver's done it the last couple of years, the Town of Rutland's been doing it for 27 years. Oxford is doing it, the first, Swan Scott does it yearly. You know, it's the theme of reduce, reuse, and cycle, it's the weekend before Earth Day. $20 a household, you get a sign delivered to your house, and you'll be on the map. And we'll just do a route, and people can go around, start, if they don't have digital, they can just come and get an actual printed map, and just make a day of it. You know, people that go yard sailing might as well, you know, and it's a good way to clean up your yard, you know? Clean up, clean up, clean up your house, everybody, I can't get in my garage, right, Michelle? You can't get in our garage, because it's full of stuff. So we can only go to the UCC Thrift Shop once a week, so we have a lot of stuff we want to get rid of. So residents may sell items at their own home. They can use their own yard sale signs if they want addition to the nice Abington Celebrates green lawn sign that we're going to provide. So we were just looking for permission to use the large parking lot at the North School for that day, the 15th, with a rain date of the 16th.
Scott, there are no issues with police or fire, right?
Nope.
Okay.
Well, we did investigate, and I guess, Abington, you don't have to get a permit for yard sales, so towns are, so the residents are free to do it. They can contact us, we'll have more information on our website, and maybe even the town's website, and people want to sign it. We would, in a perfect world, we'd like to get 40 different households in Abington to participate. Other than the $20 to be on the map, there is no cost, and they can make their own money, too, so.
And if someone wants to donate something, they can just drop it off at the North School that day?
This idea is the brainstorm of, what's that pirate that lives in Abington, Blackbeard? I think we all know him, Mike Correia, so this is his idea, it's a great idea. He's kind of spearheading, and we will go pick up items during the week before, probably, and bring them and store them, he's going to store them. He's also going to have a dumpster, so nothing's going to be left behind.
Awesome.
How far will he go to pick up items? To Whitman?
Do you need a motion, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think good, you're good.
I'll make a motion to allow Abington Celebrates the use of the North School parking lot for a yard sale fundraiser on Saturday, April 15, with a rain date of Sunday, April 16.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number four, vote to appoint Rick Collins and Brian Feeley to Opioid Settlement Fund Allocation Committee. Scott, why don't you give a little update on that, anyway?
Sure. So we did have our first sort of kickoff meeting today, and, you know, basically, we're looking to put together a mission statement, set some goals and objectives, look at putting together some procedures on, you know, what we're going to do with the funds, how we're going to allocate them, who they should go to, and organize. So the next meeting, we have posted for the 27th, 2:00 PM in here. Oh, I will post it, actually, I haven't posted it yet, but it's at 2:00 PM, right here in the Carter Room. And at that time, it's open to the public, it's a regular open meeting. And the committee will organize, they'll officially pick a chairman, vice chair, secretary, and start work on getting those first goals and objectives done. And then, I think as we had discussed, at this point now, we have, it looks like.
With these two appointments, it'll be six.
We have six people, we do have one more request, I believe, he's here, but he didn't get his request in time for tonight. So that'll be on your next agenda. So we do have quite a few people who are interested and on it. I'd like to keep the committee as it stands, at least like we had discussed for that first year, and we get it up and running, and then I think we'll come back to this board, like we said, and set some guidelines and term limits for how long people can be on, and.
And we'll know more from the state within the year, too, on how we can distribute this money, and we may want to make some changes to the board a year from now, so.
Yeah, we have, you know, we have some pretty clear, you know, there's some guidelines now that we can start following, and then hopefully, they'll make some adjustments as we go.
Out of curiosity, how much funds are we looking at here?
Currently, there's close to $100,000. And there's, at the very least, there'll be, you know, some years, there'll be $20,000 more, there'll be $30,000 coming in. It's paced out over.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years or something.
The original one was eighteen years.
There are also some other lawsuits that are settled that we will be eligible for more funding, so I don't know what those numbers are yet. But at the very least, like I said, you know, we got one upfront payment that covered five years from Johnson &amp; Johnson, and that was a $70,000, so there is a good amount of money for us to start off with and sort of get a plan together. We discussed probably modeling it after CPC, in the way that they actually operate, that if folks wanted to, if they felt as though they had a need for the funds, whether it's for a specific project or something, they could come once a year. We would have those meetings, or prior to any meeting, any town meeting. And they could apply and come meet with the committee, explain what they want to use the funds for. And then there'll be an article at future town meetings where town meeting will ultimately approve it.
The same as they do with the CPC funds.
Did we ever figure out how many people are on this committee yet? Is this the one that we were going back and forth last meeting?
Yeah, so.
So it's still going to remain open?
I think, you know, right now, we have three, we have four citizens.
Well, with these two tonight, we'll make six, and there's Peter is also put in for it, so that would make seven.
And then, one, this is a citizen, a resident and a non-resident, right, tonight?
I believe they're both residents.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, they're both residents.
Okay.
And next week will be a resident also.
That's why I was just wondering, I didn't see the address, okay.
So if we appoint the two tonight and Peter at the next meeting, there would be four actual residents on the board and three department heads.
Okay, and that's what I was wondering, I didn't know if this, one of them was going to be considered a department person?
No, he filed, he put in a citizen form.
Okay.
I do think that, you know, obviously, I do think there's a benefit with his position. And again, and I say that with the department heads, that they are all uniquely positioned to reach out to vulnerable parts of our population and different parts of it. So even if we go forward and create this as just sort of a five-member citizen committee without the departments, I think the department heads will always have an involvement in it, certainly as some sort of liaisons or, you know, resource sources.
I agree, yeah. I just, I would like to see citizens running the board with department heads just maybe having input, rather than, you know.
Right, and that's our vision, too, but just to get it going and get some of the money distributed, we just felt, since at the time, no one was putting in for it, we just felt that those department heads could be key. And, you know, those departments may be able to use some of the funds.
Definitely.
Yeah. Do I, do you want to hear from, well, Rick's here, Brian Feeley's not here. Does anyone not know Rick Collins?
Never heard of him.
Do we really want him up here talking? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rick Collins and Brian Feeley to the Opioid Settlement Fund Allocation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. And this is a town committee you must be sworn in for this, correct?
Yep.
So you'll get a letter tomorrow. Okay, so next is vote to approve the used article and pawn broker licenses renewals. We have used articles as Design Adiva 171 Brockton Ave., Electric Planet 11347 Washington Street, ABC Tech Squad 201 North Quincy, and Pawn Broker is also ABC Tech Squad 201 North Quincy Street. This is just a yearly renewal.
There's no issues with, they have no about ABC Tech Squad, is that?
I don't have any issues with any of them.
Do we need to list each one separately, or do we?
No, we can vote all, unless someone has a conflict with any of them.
No, make a motion to approve used article licenses for Design Adiva, Electric Planet, and ABC Tech Squad, and Pawn Broker license for ABC Tech Squad.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Review and vote to approve the Verizon contract. As you know, Abington Community Access has contracts with both Comcast and Verizon, and they are funded by a user's fee that's on your cable bill every month. And that's how they operate. So the town, even though the cable access is a private nonprofit, the town still is the licensing authority. So we have a committee, Cable Advisory Committee, and they are the ones that negotiate the contracts. If you remember, last year, we approved the Comcast contract, and now they've been working with Verizon to renew that. So Peter is here to just give us a brief update on that. And they actually approved the contract, but the Selectmen, as the licensing authority, must vote to approve it.
The first thing I'd like to do is to thank the fellow members of the Cable Advisory Committee. We've done two contracts in two years, and I'd like to thank Lisa Bazanson and John Attinga, and our attorney, William Hedwick from KP Law. He's been instrumental in helping us get this all resolved. One thing I would like to let people know, there's a huge. One thing I would like to let people know, there's a huge change in the cable landscape. Everybody used to either be on rabbit ears or cable, but now apps have moved in. And, for instance, in Abington, in 2011, there were 56, 28 users of cable in Abington. As of 2021, which is the latest date that there are figures for, it's down to 4706, a 16% drop, and it's looking to drop even further. But that's another whole issue about what's going on there. The contract with Verizon is basically the same with Comcast. The only difference that they have is Comcast had a 10-year time period. Verizon only does five-year contracts now. And one other thing they put in the contract is that after 31 months, they can send an official request to withdraw from the town of Abington, and it gives 180 days more that they can withdraw, you know, they have to give 180-day notice to the town. Basically, it's believed that Verizon wants just to remain nimble, so to speak, as the markets change. That's the main difference. They are also going to supply us with HD channel in 270 days. They will make a PEG grant, which pays for all the equipment and so forth, of $48,999. Interesting figure, no? But it's based on the Comcast figure. They crunch the numbers. But at any rate, there will be three payments, the first after 45 days, and the second, the first year, and the third, the third year of the contract. And the PEG fee will be 4.3%, which is equal to the Comcast. So both companies will be charging the same amount to the consumers out there, so it'll be fair to all people. And that's basically the contract. It's been reviewed by our attorney, and he's good with it. So he's on a plane from Chicago tonight, so at any rate, if you have any questions?
Anyone?
And basically, this actually ends the Cable Advisory's main function. But I've talked to the town manager, and what I'd like to do is to have a meeting every quarter or every four months or whatever, just so that if there are any complaints from the public, that we would have a vehicle to entertain them.
Also, didn't we make that Cable Advisory board a five-member board at one point?
It's still a five-member board.
It's still five, but there's only three on it.
There are only three on it.
Yeah, and it's been on the website forever, so.
Yeah. I'm thinking, to be honest with you, the three-member would be...
Well, we had changed it to five because there was a resident that wanted to be on there, and then she never showed up, so.
I think you should have a lifetime appointment.
It seems like it for me now. It's something, I've gotten into knowing the cable industry a little bit, and it's an interesting thing because, you know, changes are coming, but the FCC has to, you know, they're talking about actually taxing the apps as well as the cable companies. But that has to wait for the FCC, which only has four members right now, not the fifth, so... And I talked to the state, and they're waiting for the FCC, so that's going to be a while. But that is in the making, so that everybody who looks at YouTube for this meeting, for instance, will be contributing to it. So, but again, it's...
At this point, we will, we would have to keep it as a five-member. We could vote in the future to change it if we wanted to, but...
That's all?
I have no problem keeping it going. You're all on three-year appointments, anyway, correct?
I appreciate the detailed information. You're doing a great job, and the other two members of the committee as well.
Yeah, we started November of '21 on Verizon.
God bless you.
And they were, they were doing '21 and '22 in '22, so that's why it's taken this long. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have to, I guess, ratify basically the contract. So I need a motion to approve.
So I'll make the motion to approve the Verizon contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you, Peter. Rick Collins, would you come up for the next one? It's the discussion and vote to petition Senator Keenan to approve additional infrastructure funds to help cities and towns with the effects of the MBTA Community Zoning Act. Rick had asked me to put this on the agenda, and we've done a letter. Actually, the planning board did the letter, and he wants our support on it, and he will explain it to you.
So, Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street, member of the Abington Planning Board. As you, I think you've heard by now, there's a new state law requiring municipalities with an MBTA station to enact new zoning that allows for multifamily housing by right. And it's a process that we're going through right now. We don't have a final proposal yet. We're going through that stuff right now. But one thing that's jumped out is that when this happens, and the state has given us a target number of about 1,000 housing units, doesn't mean we have to build them, but we have to have the zoning to absorb about 1,000 housing units, is that there's going to be infrastructure costs on Abington. Whether it's water, whether it's streets, there's going to be costs. And a lot of towns are in the same boat, that whether or not they're pro-housing, anti-housing, whatever, the reality is there's going to be infrastructure costs associated with implementing this law. The problem is that the town has not allocated any money to help communities afford that. So if a town has to expand its sewer system, like Rockland's probably going to have to do it, the town of Rockland has to pay for that as of right now. Or if we want to fix up Summer Street, put sidewalks and fix the intersections at either end, we would have to pay for that.
Yeah.
So the letter asks two things. It asks the state to, asks Senator Keenan to support a change. And there's three, four main infrastructure grant pools that are out there. There's P-WED grants, Masswork Grants, iQubed. The problem is that as of right now, they're mostly earmarked for economic development projects. So if we want to build a factory, they'll help pay for the infrastructure for the factory. If you want to put a 40B or a housing project, they're not going to help you pay for that. So the idea is that you expand the eligibility for communities to mitigate the costs for coming in line with 3A. And then the second request is that they increase the amount of funding going into these programs, too, because now you're going to have 170 communities looking for help as well. So rather than making it, you know, dog-eat-dog, you can at least expand the pool a little bit. So all this does is it asks Senator Keenan, as part of the budget process coming up, to expand, to support an increase in the eligibility, support an increase in the funding. He has agreed to do so, which is why his name's on the top of it. It will, of course, be sent to Representative Sullivan as well, because actually, the House does their budget first. And also, if you agree to support it, I'm going to start to send it out to some colleagues and connections I have in other towns that are going to be impacted as well. And the hope is, is that if the legislature hears from 170 communities saying, hey, we need help paying for this law that you passed and placed on us, well, this is a way that we can do that pretty easily.
Have a unfunded mandate?
I would certainly argue that. It's pretty close to it. Only reason it might not be is because technically, they don't have to be built. And there's some language in there about what if there isn't enough water and sewer capacity? But if they want this law to be successful, and the state has said over and over that they want this law to be successful, they have to help towns pay for the infrastructure, or else it's not going to be successful. It's not going to be implemented. They're not going to get the housing units. So, you know, put up the money to help the towns do this.
So that letter is in the folder that's going around? I don't think I'll read the whole thing, but basically, it's what Rick just said. It's a two-page letter that it'll be signed by the board of selectmen and the planning board, so.
Do you need a motion?
We do. I'm not sure we do, but I'd like one, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to petition Senator Keenan to approve additional infrastructure funds to help cities and towns with the effects of the MBTA Community Zoning Act.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Are we sending a copy to Representative Sullivan? Or are we going to send her the same letter?
You can do it either way. You can print out a second version with her title up top and...
Whatever you think.
Probably be...
I think so.
Just, it's both fairly easy to do.
So can you...
We'll just change the first page.
Right, so if you could, yeah, right. Do you want to print out another one, and we sign the other one, or just a copy of that, a copy of the second page?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, vote to adjust the senior tax work-off tax rebate hourly rate from $7.50 per hour to $9.00 per hour. Scott, why don't you tell us what that's all about?
I think the seniors deserve to be paid more than $7.50.
All right, thank you.
This doesn't change the maximum amount that they're eligible for. That's something... We actually, I think, had talked, or at least some requests were being made, that we make these adjustments, it, again, it will effectively reduce the number of hours that they actually have to work to get to that maximum benefit.
And the maximum is?
I believe it's $600, yeah. So initially, actually, we thought we had to do this as a town meeting article. After going back and forth with town council on it, though, he says that, you know, that was something that was voted, that you guys could set up this program, so we feel that you have the ability to make this vote without going to town meeting.
How did this come up? Will we, like, gauging with other towns, or...
I'm not sure if it was gauged with other towns. I think, I'm not sure. Mike brought it to my attention. I'm not really sure who brought it to...
Do we know how we deal with other towns?
Ellen Doyne, yeah. And the, you know, I think it's just, everything else has gone up. I think that they probably looked at that, $7.50, and said...
Did we look at other towns or no? Like, do we compare to other towns to see where we stand?
This was the number that was suggested.
I was just curious.
No, we can take a look and see what other towns are doing. It's not like they have that option to go to another town that pays more.
No, but I just, if another town is substantially more...
Substantially higher. So you can't be above a certain rate, the state minimum wage, which I think we're well below that.
That's what I was wondering.
But it's also going to be what, you know, I think if we're going to go to a certain, a higher dollar amount, then the assessors have to account for it, and...
And they would be working less hours, too, because there's a maximum what they can...
They still max, you know, they max out at $500 or $600. So it's however many hours you go from either $7.50 to get to $600, or in this case, now it'll be $9.00 an hour to get to $600. You still only work till that point.
Yeah, understandable. I mean, hopefully, the higher rate will attract more people.
We do get a good pool. There is a good amount of volunteers. It's really nice to see.
Yeah, and we had a meeting on this about a year ago, and it's a good working program now. And we made some changes to make it run a little smoother, and I think it's going well, so.
Scott?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I interrupted you. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Scott, to piggyback off something you said, is any word from the assessors' office about us making this change?
I have discussed it with the assessors' office. Yep, they're...
They're giving it the green light?
Yep.
Okay. And I mean, I know, working down to the compo site that I did when I was on the Board of Health, these senior volunteers really give 110%, and especially in the summer months. They do an absolutely phenomenal job. I, I'm in favor of raising it to $9.00. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to adjust senior tax work-off tax rebate hourly rate from $7.50 per hour to $9.00 per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, vote to open the annual town meeting warrant for the purpose of adding three new articles. First, to see if the town will vote to authorize $69,000 to pay for the cost of design, estimating, engineering, and construction administration of the Washington Street Bike Lane and pedestrian improvements. Second, to see if the town will vote to authorize $16,038.91 for the purpose of providing a match for a grant to purchase new...
Portable radios for the fire department.
Portable, but it goes from nine to 10, but yeah, portable radios for the fire department. The third article seeks to remove the police department from civil service as negotiated with the Abington Police Union.
So that is nine and 10?
Yeah, nine and 10, it's...
Someone didn't know how to number?
Not very nice.
So the $69,000, we found out afterwards, John Stone mentioned we got a grant of $500 and...
$500,000 plus, yeah, to do the Washington Street improvements.
Washington Street, which fits into the plan that Tim and Scott and I have been working on for eventually to go from the rail trail all the way across town through here and somewhere down the road. But anyway, we found out afterwards that we have to pay for the engineer design and project management. So we need that on the town meeting in order to get the grant. The other one is, again, to the matching grant, and then the third one is the civil service that's been negotiated.
Yeah, and so if you do, obviously, if you vote to open the town meeting warrant, I will review the articles. We have, you know, it was really just a draft warrant with a lot of placeholders when you first saw it. Tonight, we have CPC, members of the community preservation here, and we have, their numbers are now in here also, so we can let them speak to what their program is.
So I'm looking for a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, so go for it, Scott.
Let me give you the, I'll start right at the beginning.
Okay.
If you guys have your copies, you'll see, I'm really going to mostly highlight on the changes. And what you'll see, the snow and ice cost is still just a sum of money at this point. We'll see what happens over the next couple of days. We're probably going to be somewhere in that $200,000 range, though, for that, which is, you know, it's been, not going to be a good year so far, and let's hope it stays that way over the next few days.
It's been a good year for no snow, but it's going to be a bad year for water.
Yeah.
If we have a drought.
We've added that number for the payment of the prior year's bill. That was just a sum of up until recently. So right now, it appears the only prior year bills that we'll have is totaling $478.04. When you get into the capital plan, we did remove, we removed a request from the Department of Public Works for a six-wheeled dump truck. I feel as though that we'd be able to put that in through our Plymouth County Opera Funds. And if for some reason I'm not successful with that, then we'll likely bring it forward in the fall town meeting. Park and Rec, we have, they've asked for funds for a bathtub and a retaining wall, and I think I have to get some engineering done on that, so I'm going to try and leverage some opera funds on that. And then once I get the engineering and get some costs out, we'll either pop it into a fall town meeting or we'll deal with it at their next annual. The school department, as you'll see, the laptops are in there, and the, was a ramp that we were proposing to build, ADA accessible ramp for the Frollo. The price on that came in fairly high. We're trying to seek some grant funding for that. Typically, accessibility projects, we can get some grant funding for. So we're going to see what we can get, and then we'll bring that back either in the fall or at the next annual. Article three, that's our community preservation budget. And again, we didn't have the numbers when we first posted this, so I'm going to turn it over. If you folks would like to give us a little update on what you have here, please.
Hi, Amanda Zompetti, Chair of the Community Preservation Commission. As always, it's always very fun to see all the projects that come to us. If you want to look them over real quick, I don't know if I need to go through each one, or if there are any questions initially when you're looking.
So we're gonna repair the pavilion that's...
Yes.
Had the fence around it for two years.
Yes.
Great.
There is, we've seen a couple design ideas for it, and we're very excited about that, yeah.
That'll be a complete, like, restoration of it, or is that like partial?
Yes, the plan actually is, looking at the application, they had a contractor come out and look, and the roof is actually in great condition. So the whole idea is supporting that, kind of bringing it off, and then you only have to build kind of the understructure, which saves, that's why it's only $50,000 for it. So they actually can actually use part of it already, which is kinda nice, and then just restore and build new.
That's awesome.
And then the Griff, number three, the Griffin's Dairy Fence Post is for the community garden. So a specific part of Griffin's Dairy.
And we are, through Liz Shea and myself, we have filed for a grant for this open space recreation plan. The update, we've been trying to get some funding for that. Hopefully, we'll get the grant and we'll be able to not use those funds, but on the shot that we don't get the grant, we're glad that you guys are gonna fund this for us, because we've been waiting quite a while, and that's a big part of our, our plan to, you know, get these connectors going.
And the Island Grove Bridge design, that is so we can get grants for that, and we're working on grants.
Correct, yep, so the study was initially done to figure out what needs to be done to that. I believe that was done fiscal year 20 or 21. And then last year, it was to figure out the actual engineering study, to see how much it would cost, what would actually be done. I still don't understand whether it's two separate things, but maybe that's just me. And then now it's to actually do the full design of what would come to that. And it's, they are bringing in someone, from what I understand, that has done bridges similar to this in the community, so.
Excellent.
Do you know if there's any real change to the design to it, or is it gonna remain intact?
So the biggest thing that came from this original study is that the actual bases in the water are okay. So it's actually just the top part, which is a wonderful news to hear, because that changes what the construction has to be done. I don't know what the design will look like, I think that's gonna be part of this, is to figure out, do we keep it the exact same? Is there better material that might look a little different? Do we wanna make it all, you know, sparkly? I don't know, so...
Definitely.
No sparkles.
Yeah, no sparkles.
Yeah, sparkly, we're just gonna add glitter right through the middle, that's what we need.
I know that was something the Historical Commission was also discussing, too, whether...
It technically touches Island Grove, which is considered a part of the historicals. That's where a lot of the Island Grove stuff starts to be, like, it doesn't have to be the same material, but it might have to have a certain look to it to be able to match, because it's on the historical side.
I'm thinking that's what that preservation restriction that we're doing will, will require it to at least look like.
Yep.
What is the Historical Inventory Grant Match? Could you explain that?
Yep, so the Historical Society or Historical Commission is looking to, and Dire is, I'll actually pull this up so I can not just talk off the top of my head. So this is a, Abington Historical Commission is looking for $20,000 so that they can apply for a grant that is administered by the State Historic Preservation Office. You have to have matching funds to be able to apply for this grant, so they have to have these funds available to even apply. The application is due this November, and it'll be awarded in March 24 if they are awarded it. So our thought was, give them the funds, if for some reason they do not get the grant, they can come back, maybe they can start some of the work, come back next year, just gets delayed a little bit, or hopefully they get it, and then they can start the work, which would be completed by June 2025. And this is to, I can actually explain right here, the Abington Historic Inventory has not been updated for more than 30 years. These inventory forms are the foundation of municipal historical preservation efforts. Information from these inventory forms have found their way to local classrooms, walking tours, historical marker programs, local comprehensive plans and publications, and these forms help to raise public appreciation for and understanding of historic properties and sites in Abington.
Great. And one other question, what is the Green Wave Connector Trail design?
Wonderful. So the Green Wave Connector Trail is on this new property right here, behind the town hall. So the idea is, this is also, the expected project is to be 105, $105,000. They're only asking for 25,000 CPA funds, because they are looking for two different grants, in ARPA funding and another grant, and this would be to look at the design of creating a paved path from behind the library, or the track potentially, to Buckboard...
Orchard lane?
Broad Meadow Lane, sorry.
Orchard, Orchard Lane?
Well, it's through the Zero Orchard property, and I think it ends up on Buckwater and Broad Meadow down there.
Which, again, connects everything that we've been talking about.
Which is something that I know has been brought up in the past, yeah. There is a sewer line that might potentially, this is just to look at what the design of it would be, paving, lighting, understanding. Part of the thing, or part of the CPC's recommendation as we put this forth is that there needs to be a little caveat of during the design, making sure there's consideration of parking on the Broad Meadow side, potentially just like we have on Monroe Street, understanding that people might park there to be able to come here, so making sure that that's included in the plan was part of our, like, little asterisk, kinda thing.
And then that connects us to the land we just fought.
Exactly.
So all the land up to Rockland.
But we need the open space plan to be able to apply for grants to be able to do that. It's all coming together.
It is all coming together, yeah, it is. And it's been a lot of work by a lot of people in town the last couple of years, and this board's been pushing for it, and Scott has, and thank you to all of you that have been working for it, too. It's finally coming together.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I don't. Well, I guess maybe you could explain the $100,000 of housing, Affordable Housing Trust. What does that actually do?
So the Affordable Housing Trust, right now, I mean, Housing Commission could explain more about what they would do with those funds, but right now, we made the recommendation of buying the 100,000, because we are really hoping with the Housing Trust Action Plan that's getting put forth in the next few months, they're having a three-year, five-year plan to kind of study some affordable housing and housing support programs in town, including the Center at North School, getting that all bundled. So our thought was, offering that 100,000 bumps up their housing trust in a way that if they have to make a decision or find a developer, they're not waiting on us for eight, nine months. We've been waiting for so long to get some affordable housing action happening in town, and to see this action plan potentially, we wanted to make sure that if they actually do start to make quick movements, they have some funds available. They did request 300,000, we did bring it down to 100,000, just because we've offered them some money in the past, but we wanna make sure that they're able to move forward.
Great. Very good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, so then you'll see our next articles, and they've been renumbered, obviously. Typical articles, the health imperative funding is in there every year for 5,000. Arc of the social funding, 2,500. We still have the article for the purchase of the vacant land that's next to the police station on Central Street. We did send a, an offer to the property owner, and we have not heard back, so I'm not really sure where we're gonna be at with that. The funding of the roadway infrastructure improvement projects. We have accepting Moshfield into the SocioVOTEC. The representative from SocioVOTEC will be here at your next meeting to just kind of discuss that a little bit more. We have the funding of the union contracts, we have fire, police, and library. Article 11, so that's the local option to allow a veteran property tax work-off abatement program, similar to the senior program, it'll operate in the same fashion. We have our local option to establish the designated safety zones, which will give this board that ability to establish speed limit zones in certain areas of town if they're thickly settled, or in a business district, and you think that, you know, it warrants it. So then Article 13 was the matching grant funding, that's to see if the town will raise or appropriate 16,038.91 for a matching grant for the portables for the fire department. And that will either do through free cash, or we will use Recovery Plan Act funds for that. Washington Street Bike Lane and Pedestrian Improvement, again, that's $69,000 to pay for our share of the project. It's a half a million dollar project, and we're expected to pay for the cost of designing, estimating, engineering, bidding, and construction administration. That's all, obviously, a good deal. So that, those are the two, those two were added, and then Number 15, which is the police department separation from civil service, we added that language, and that's all pending our final sign-off and MOU with the police department. That was a negotiated agreement, if it comes to fruition, it's by their choice also. And then with the...
Can I, I just stop you there, just for the listeners, because there will be some questions on the civil service. Everyone that's in civil service now, nobody loses anything, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
It will only affect new hires in the future, and actually won't even go into effect. We have, the people that are in the academy now would still be covered under...
Right.
Civil service, and it could even perhaps be a couple after that, still.
Yeah.
But it will eventually...
Right.
Take effect.
Should get the police chief in to explain that once, ready?
Yeah.
It's his realm, you know?
Yep. So then, and we get into our zoning articles, amendment to the zoning bylaw, these are a lot to do with language that they had to put in there to comply with our stormwater management and things like that, so they're really...
And they held a hearing last week on these, correct?
Yeah. So they're largely housekeeping articles, there's nothing new. They did actually remove a couple that were in the initial warrant. And I think, I think the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the, is the tree article a new article, or is that just a, an amendment to, or is that gone?
It's consolidating pre-existing bylaws, basically.
Okay. And then the final one is the authorization of the preservation restriction on the Memorial Bridge in Island Grove. Again, that goes along with what we had been talking about earlier. These are requirements from our Historical Commission in order for us to be eligible for grant money for repairs of the bridge.
Okay. Any questions on that? Do I have a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant?
I'll make that motion to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Town managers' report for an FY '24 budget update.
We didn't get a copy, did we?
No, of course not.
I didn't see it on the packet, sorry.
Take one and pass it down.
So the budget process moving along well now. We're currently closing the deficit gap, it's still somewhere in that $200,000 range, which is a far cry better than 1.8 million. Unfortunately, at this time, though, we realize it's not possible to fund it, any additional positions to DPW or the Planning Department. As much as the respective department heads made a great case for the importance of filling the positions, it's just not possible, given the current financial situation. The town was fortunate to see an increase in the Chapter 70 school funding, increases in unrestricted government aid, but however, the, those increases, the increases in costs that are associated with fuel, heating, and electricity still make it for, make for a very tight budget year. Our costs in health insurance and liability insurance have all, both increased also. They were moderate, but on the health end, it was up approximately 5.5%, which is actually good, but it's still, it's a, you know, when you're talking a million dollars, that's still a pretty big increase. Good news is, we did get our free cash certified, it was just over $2 million, so we do have the funds to support our capital plan, and we will be able to cover any snow and ice deficit also, up until, at least at this point, and see what happens. You know, another factor that is driving the budget is funding the collective bargaining agreements. The amount needed to fund the agreement's quite significant, but it is important to note that these agreements are fair and warranted, based on comparisons with comparable communities and what those comparable communities are paying. Side note, I'm pleased to announce that Chief Delpapa has promoted Justin Canada to the rank of sergeant, and we will ask them to come in, I think, probably around the time that the recruits get out of the academy. Maybe we'll have them come in and do a presentation of all the new help and new hires and new promotions. And as we discussed earlier, today was the first meeting of the opioid committee, and we discussed the mission statement, organization, goal-setting, objectives, as well as what we'll put forward for procedures, and, you know, updating the website and our social media presence to let everybody know about it. The committee has scheduled the next meeting for Monday, March 27, 2:00 p.m., right here in the town hall Carter Room. This is an open meeting and available for the public to attend. That's it.
Scott, the budget, were there any departments that actually increased their size? Like, is it just DPW and planning that didn't get what they wanted over there?
Yeah, so, I mean, actually, even the school department has been great about work, and there's some programs that they're not gonna put forward, new hires that, you know, they, or at least one that I know of, but other programs that they won't be able to expand on. But they were, again, these were things that, you know, at the beginning of the year, we say to the departments, "Look, tell us what you need to, you know, provide the best services you can," and it's, so it's, I don't like to use the term wish list, but it's like, you know, in a perfect world, this is what we would be able to provide. So most of the departments, I think, you know, you probably, like, the senior center really is working with what they have to reallocate people, and very little increase over there, I think it was like a 3% increase over their budget, for that part. The Health Department, we're seeking to have a person in there who would be a, really, it would be the position that Chris Schultz had before he moved on up, that was the Assistant Health Coordinator. There's grant money that's attached to that position. Right now, we have a, we have put somebody, an administrative assistant, in there to help out, because they just don't have enough coverage, but we're stealing from the Building Department to do that. So it's really going back to where they were, you know, prior to a lot of the changes downstairs. And again, that's a, you know, one of the increasing costs that we have every year that's hard to really control is our waste hauling, and a lot of that just has to do with, you know, the same reasons that, you know, we're having a tough budget year, is, you know, fuel costs, electric costs. And really, we don't have many options on what we can do to reduce the cost of waste hauling, except trying to educate people and maybe have more folks bring stuff to a compost center, or a, if we can use the transfer, or the compost station as a somewhat transfer area where we could bring in cardboard that can be recycled, we can reduce our tonnage. So having this person down there would be very helpful as far as getting, you know, getting educational information out there, and having a body who could either be at that site or helping with inspection, so somebody else could be at that site.
I was just curious, 'cause I know that, that study of the DPW, it seemed like we were significantly, we were the lowest, I think, in, out of the 40 towns on there, but I just didn't know how that went into, if other departments actually got funding and additional positions and DPW didn't. I feel like DPW could solve a lot of problems in town if it had more people.
Yeah, I mean, they all made a great case, and DPW did, too. They all made a great case on why they would need and what they need. We did add a position to DPW last year. I will probably ask them to bring it forward again next year. I think, you know, they are the backbone in the work costs, you know, for our roads, our fields, our buildings. We certainly need them.
Definitely. And I just want to say congratulations to Sergeant Canada, I saw it on Facebook, he was promoted, so, congratulations.
Any other questions? Okay. So at this point, we ask everyone to leave, so we can vote to go into executive session.
Make a motion to enter into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a roll call, Alex?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all for coming.